Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners to order. This was the evening of 21 September. This will be a recess meeting, and we'll talk about that a little later. So as usual, you can check your phones on file if you have it on the run so. And we're going to call Mr. Trent Easler to deliver our invocation. He comes from the First Baptist Church of Mayanan, a place we all know and love. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Kevin Berger if he would render the pledge of allegiance immediately following. So if it stands for the invocation in place.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for county commissioner meeting that wants to acknowledge you. And Lord, we acknowledge you as being our sovereign God, a God who is in control, a God who is concerned about us personally, concerned about our decisions that we make as a county, as a state, our respective towns, and then as you care about us as a nation. And Lord, I do thank you for your blessings. I pray that you would give wisdom tonight to every councilman. I pray that you would bless them for their work here. Lord, every issue that comes before them is something that is important, and I'm thankful that they treat it that way. And Lord, in these days of dealing with this pandemic, as decisions are not as easy with anything that we make, well, we do pray for our county, we pray for our schools, pray for our towns, pray for our churches as they try to navigate through this process. And Lord, I pray that you would bless Rockingham County. I pray that you would show favor upon it and bless this meeting this evening. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Place flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Pastor Easler. We appreciate you being here. We appreciate that invocation. Very meaningful. Gentlemen, you've had the agenda for the last 10 days or so, and I know of no adjustments to the agenda other than we're going to recess this meeting. So I would entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So moved?
So moved and seconded. Further discussion here, none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. You've also had the consent agenda for the same period of time. There have been no additions or deletions, correct, Jennifer, since this was published? So if someone is willing to motion approval or denial, we'll accept that at this time.
So moved?
Moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Further discussion here, none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Public comment tonight is noticeably blank. So we're going to move on to Lydia Craddock. And Lydia's going to talk to us about Rocket Top and perhaps some programs you've heard of before, but I've asked her to come back and give us an update, particularly in regards to how the pandemic has affected this Rocket Top program. So thank you for being here. We appreciate it, Ms. Craddock.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you so much for allowing us to come and chat with you. We normally come and give you a report. Let me back up. My name is Lydia Craddock. I work as apprenticeship facilitator for the public school system. Ms. Jennifer Lester is with me. She is the department head for Applied Technologies at Rockingham Community College, and she is their apprenticeship coordinator. Dr. Kenneth Scott is with me, and he is the CTE, the Career and Technical Education Director, with the school system. This program that we're chatting about, the various programs, are an integral collaboration between school systems, public and private, but also with the community college. So they are with me as well tonight. Again, sirs, thank you for allowing me to chat with you. Normally, we come once a year and we give you an apprenticeship report for Rocket Top apprenticeship. We are coming a little bit early this year because the Colonel has asked that we give you an update of how COVID has affected us. So let me chatter. Commissioners, in your packet, you have a bulleted report from me, you have a monthly newsletter and a program brochure. Apprenticeship is going strong. Apprenticeship involves students that are working in a trade, working toward their associate's degree, and they can be in high school and then several years after high school. So our apprenticeship program is going strong. We have three cohorts. We are in our third year, which means we have 35 total apprentices. We are excited about that. We currently have seven companies with apprentices on the floor. So we, again, I say, we are excited about that. COVID did impact us. The impact was serious, but relatively manageable. What happened, some of our students that were 11th graders, they have the opportunity to participate in this, to apply for this, in 11th and 12th grade. Some of them that had applied with us and had even been accepted into pre-apprenticeship said, "I need to wait. I have vulnerable family members." Remember March 13th, when we called a screeching halt? Nobody knew quite what was coming. So several of our students did postpone their involvement. Some of our companies postponed their involvement because they weren't sure what was happening with supply lines in China, weren't sure that they were going to be able to keep their end of the bargain, so they postponed their involvement. We did have one company discontinue their involvement for the present. They were having to furlough employees, a large number of employees, and felt like they needed to discontinue with apprenticeship as well. You can't really furlough an employee that's been there 10 years and keep an apprentice. So we were able to find places for those. That's the next point. Those apprentices were reassigned. Two of them were reassigned to apprenticeships in other companies. One of them chose to pursue her education in a slightly different manner. We are following up with her. She is pursuing it in something outside of our apprenticeship. So those three were taken care of. We did this summer have nine new apprentices come on board. We were excited about that because when March 13th hit us, we weren't quite sure where we were going forward. We did have nine come on board. But gentlemen, what we are seeing, apprenticeship is a great program, and these folks are working toward their associate's degree, but we are seeing that we have a different, we have additional needs, both from our community, from our students, and from our work, our industries. And so we are working hard. We had two programs ready to go last year, but again, every event was canceled, March 13th, so everything had to shut down. So we feel like we're starting those all over again. And here's what happens. We've mentioned Rocket Top apprenticeship. That's the program. That's our flagship. We're working with the community college on Rocket Top Career Express. We have a number of students that they are, they're willing to do additional education. They are not looking for a four-year college degree. They may not even be looking for a two-year college degree. They are looking for training in a skill, training in trade, whether they are looking for HVAC certification, or an electrician certification, or a plumbing certification. We also have companies that they are not looking for a lot of associate-level degrees, but they are looking for people with credentials. So that is our Rocket Top Career Express, and we are aiming some events at recruiting folks for that this year and recruiting companies. But then we go on a little, we dig down a little bit further, and legitimately, we have students that are ready to go to work when they graduate high school. We would like them, if they are ready to go to work, we would like them to go into something that is going to lead to a career or something that pays more than minimum wage. And what we are trying to do, again, working with the community college and NC Works, to connect our graduating high school seniors with some soft skills training and local full-time employment after high school, if that's their goal. If their goal is continued education, we want to connect them with that. But if their goal is to work, we would like them to find something that can be career-oriented that is not just minimum wage. COVID stopped us in our tracks with this one last year, and so thankfully, my boss is allowing some, he's allowing some employee time. We are now going back and telephoning all of our graduates from this past June and saying, "What are you doing? Are you looking for work? Did you get into school?" In an effort to try to either guide them to our community college, guide them to somebody that is hiring. So we want to make a real connection there. So that's Rocket Top Works. Rocket Top Connects is a program where we have found that some of our students come to apprenticeship and their eyes are, we had someone at an open house day that Ms. Lester had in her facility, and somebody came out of there and they had like never touched, they didn't know what welding was, and they were so excited about that, and they said, "I want to do that," but they'd never seen that before. So we are looking at connecting high school students that are looking for summer employment to our trades. Are there trades out there looking for employees? Is the construction trade looking for someone in the summer? Is HVAC looking for someone in the summer? So that our 10th and 11th graders have exposure to trades and know what's out there. Those are the programs that we are working with, that we're going to come back next year and give you numbers for how we've been successful with those. So what is happening right now, in your eighth grade, we are in your eighth grade helping students complete career assessments so that they know which direction they would like to head. That way, we can capture an eighth grader that says, "I am super interested in hands-on work." We can capture them so that we can make sure, and I'm not being rude, I'm making this course up, we can make sure they don't spend their time taking a cake decorating class if they want to be a welder. We want to get them, we don't teach cake decorating classes. I'm just using that as an example. But what I'm saying is, we want to get them in the right place. So we're doing that with the eighth grades. We are doing it again with the ninth grades to make sure it took, in the eighth grade. But then, this is what I'm so excited about. 11th, 12th graders, we started our apprenticeship recruiting. We're having to do virtual. This is a very different thing. We sent out an eight-minute video. They are answering four questions about their interest or potential interest. And so far, when I left the office earlier today, I had 747 responses back yet. So we can take the, no, not 747 wanting apprenticeship, but 747 responses already that we're able to say, "Oh, you're going to want to talk to the college advisor. Oh, you're going to want to talk to the apprenticeship advisor. Oh, you're going to want to talk to the careers advisor." So excited about that. Happening soon, watch for a virtual company recruiting event coming up in November. Watch for a virtual parent information event coming up in November and December. Guys, thank you. Now you have in front of you too, a newsletter that we're going to start sending to Ms. Jennifer once a month, and she will get that out to you to keep you informed. We want to let you know, and this was, I mean, we got, we had a phone conversation with someone who said, "I really don't know what's going on." And so we work with this all day, and I think everybody in the world knows. We're going to do our best to make sure you know how things are evolving and what things are going on. So expect to get that from Ms. Woods once a month. And that's going to, we're Chamber of Commerce, it's going to the school board, it's going to lots of folks. Anybody can request it if they want it. So let me leave with a thank you. It is real easy for me to come up here and be the Rocket Top lady because I talk, you know? But look at, none of this happens without all of these people. The Rockingham County Board of Commissioners, you guys, the community college, the county schools, private schools, please be aware that these programs are available for those students. Economic Development of Rockingham County, Reesville Eden and Western Rockingham Chambers of Commerce, our whole business community that take our students, our Citizens for Economic Development Board, that is our fiscal agent, tons more, but just a big thank you to all of those. Now, if you want to know about us, please follow us. You can follow us on Twitter, you can follow us on Instagram, you can follow us on Facebook. Use Rocket Top NC. If you just use Rocket Top, you get some man whose name is something else that we don't even know about. But Rocket Top NC, follow us on any of those. You can contact us at the website, rockettop.org. You can email us at rockettopnc. So the information, boil it down, COVID affected us. It did not stop us. It affected us. It did stop some of our plans last year, but we revamped them, and we are starting those plans over again. Do you gentlemen have any questions for me?
Ms. Craddock, thank you so much for coming. We spoke on the phone, and I just wanted to bring up some of the concerns I brought to you when I spoke to you, you know, with having a kid in high school. My child never brought anything home to me about Rocket Top. I knew about it because of this, but I'm just wondering, how many other parents out there didn't know anything about Rocket Top program? Because most kids don't think about this, and they leave it in their bookbag, and when they clean it out at the end of the year, "Oh, there it is," you know?
Right.
So are we reaching out to the parents of these kids, eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th grade, to show them, "Hey, this is available to your child if y'all push them to it?"
Yes, we are. Two ways, actually three ways. We are not giving them pieces of paper to take home because when I give them pieces of paper to take home, I have to clean them up out of the driveway, and the principals get upset with me. So based on some, based on the conversation with you, we are mounting our virtual parent night. Now, we have always put this on all of the schools' websites. We've always put it on what I call the robo-call. I don't know what the school system actually calls that automated call, but anyway, automated calls. We have always put it out on announcements. One of the things that we are waiting for postage to do is to actually mail to you the parent, not a letter that says, "To the parent of John Smith," because you know that's a form letter, but a letter that says, "To T. Craig Travis," and that comes from, with Rocket Top stationery, to give you, we've not done that before. We've not done direct mailing. So we've taken, we've listened to what you said, both. We are, as I said, we are going to keep you updated in a more formal fashion with our monthly letters, and then we are going to try that with the parents. But I will tell you, you are a parent of a young one, right?
No, 11, 12th grade.
That's young. I'm 100. Okay. But we do find that we have to be really careful when we talk with parents because I can get the parent excited.
Yeah.
Mr. Berger, I can get you excited. I can get you excited. And you can drag your child to this apprenticeship program, you can tell him how wonderful it's going to be, and then Ms. Lester gets him in that summer, and if he really didn't want to be there, if you wanted to be there, he's not successful. So I want parents to know, but at the same time, I want to be careful about how hard I sell it to parents. Yeah.
Well, I just brought it up because I know every year I have to go to a homeroom class.
Right.
I have to give them my email address. So, you know, that might be a cheaper way for you to get information out to parents because most kids have, parents got an email address, they get information.
We hadn't, we hadn't considered that, but that's one to consider. Thank you.
But thank you so much for everything.
Yes.
I think this is a great program, especially for, you know, everybody's not meant to go to college.
Well, and if you think about apprenticeship, apprenticeship is college. You know, they're getting that associate's degree, and so, yes, but there's something here for everybody. We want to connect our children to, they're not children, we want to connect our young adults to viable careers in our community. Guys, I am at the school system. If you need to email me, it's L.Craddock with the letter 2 behind it, and then all the school system stuff. Don't hesitate to call, and if you email me, you'll get my email information back, and there's my cellphone on that. Don't hesitate to call me. Thank you all for your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Craddock.
Well, didn't give the other commissioners a chance.
Oh, I stand right here. I was only interested in Travis. Yes, sir. I was getting off the hot seat. Any questions? Mr. Berger?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Perdell? Mr. Hall?
No, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
Yeah. And you've got a couple of your colleagues out here, and I know from firsthand experience how much involved they've been, and particularly, Dr. Scott, if you hadn't stayed the course two or three years ago, this wouldn't be happening. So special recognition to you and keeping, and RCC is an essential part of this. So thank you for keeping all that engagement. Appreciate it.
Yeah, many, many, many important partners. I just happen to be the one with the loudest mouth, y'all, but thank you.
Item eight is our Director of Engineering, famously known for his terse and to-the-point presentations.
It's Nat speaking too.
You won't be able to blame me for this one tonight. This one will be on Bill Lester. Gentlemen, I have one item for your consideration tonight. The county has an opportunity to look at some grant funding to assist with some activities surrounding our water system, hydraulic modeling, water quality modeling, O&amp;M reporting, development of systems for long-term sustainability. This grant is through NCDQ. The maximum request is 150,000. It does require a 5% match. For us, that would be $2,250 out of county funds, and then 5,250 can be used as in-kind effort from the staff. And we have money in our O&amp;M budget if you guys choose for us to pursue this, to get the $2,250 from. But I'll let Bill come up here with LKC Engineering and give you some more details about this.
A few more details. He hit a lot of it, but it is, it's a planning grant of sorts, and it's money made available by the Department of Environmental Quality through their Division of Water Infrastructure. You'll remember, we recently received some money from that same program for relocating Hogan's Creek Booster Pump Station. This is more on the planning side. This is a program, one of many, that I monitor constantly, and we fall a little short on some of the points, but there are some things in place that I thought, if we have an opportunity, this is the time to take it. And I just thought I'd bring it to Ronnie and the board and see if you have an interest. It's kind of got a very small local match at 5%. You're at 5% quite honestly because we meet these local governmental unit factors that put us in that category and keeps us from being 10 and 20%, which makes it a little harder sometimes for in-kind because we can come up with 5,000 or so in-kind easily. And the 2,250 is the portion that's just called a grant fee. You have to pay that regardless. Going through the DEQ program, there's always a grant or loan fee, just like the larger million and $2 million projects has a little small fee. Ronnie mentioned a lot of things through the mapping update. You've got a good mapping system. It'll be things that'll tie the attributes and all of the data found in this project to the mapping system. You know, you click on it, everything is right there. Anything needs to be GPS located, they don't have a good handle on, that'll be in it. Complete asset inventory and assessment. There's a hydraulic model. As we grow, that's going to be a huge thing we're going to need. Developers are going to be constantly asking, "What will I see there?" In addition to that, we can put a little water quality modeling on it. We know how that important that is right now as we do all the system flushing. We're hoping that gets better as well through some increased usage, but the model helps all of that. Detailed capital improvement plan, the operation and maintenance report, maintenance plan that you can develop out of this will also include all the critical asset review and planning. Critical assets are all the booster pumps you've got, all of the chemical feed systems you've got. The tank itself has working parts, so that'll, that'll be a very detailed report related to that. We'll go through water efficiency reporting, a water audit. You may do some of these things a little. We'll fine-tune that. It'll end up, maybe start off with the record drawing archiving, which you've already done a pretty good job of, but we'll get that detailed, organized in certain ways that it can be referenced back into the attributes of the map. And then at the end, we put a little money in there if you so choose to have anyone working with the program to have a tablet that's got all of this at the fingertips where you just call it up, click on it, and it's all right there. So there's a little money in it that'll allow that purchase as well. Extremely competitive program. Each year, they probably fund, and this is a pure guess, it's way less than half. I don't even think they get to 25% of the applicants, and it's always an extremely large amount of applicants. A lot of people are always going into there. So if you so choose, we have enough of the work done. We'll get this thing completed and submitted by the deadline, which is September 30th, which is, I think, next Wednesday.
Questions, gentlemen? Go ahead.
Applying for a grant through DEQ, would anything in this grant provide DEQ with any additional ability to regulate that they don't already have?
I don't think so.
Okay.
What, the applying, no.
Okay.
And you do provide a complete findings report, but I, I'm thinking quickly. I don't see anything that would give them anything except probably a positive outlook.
Okay.
You know, right now, the negatives, if you will, are administrative orders and notices for the disinfection byproducts things that when you're out of compliance. Outside of that, I think everything's a positive. Okay.
I assume that you would let a bid for a consultant or somebody to actually perform this assessment, or would it be all internal?
It'll be internal and/or engineering-type consultant. It's not construction.
Okay. And this is kind of off the topic, but I couldn't help, you mentioned the word about purging the system. I've been concerned about water on the ground and how much it costs. Do you guys have an idea about how much purging our systems costs us annually?
Let Ronnie answer that.
I think the last, the last time I checked with what we're doing right now, it's running about $100 a day on 220 and 158. We're flushing at the end of the 220 system on Price Mill Road and on 158 past the Charter School. And that one's running a little more because of the water quality there, but it's about $100 a day in, in what we pay for the water.
Okay.
Is that a calendar day or five days a week or seven days?
Seven days a week.
Wow.
Yeah. So now that'll, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, that should lessen some with the temperature change and getting a little bit cooler and not having that water sitting in the pipe when it's as hot as it is. So we'll see that probably taper off some as we get into fall and winter time.
I think some of the work Eric's done recently has helped. Some of the problems we had, what we've done with the increased lines that have been installed and continue the way we work, we made it a little more difficult. Maybe that's one way to look at it, but the good news is, as you know, from other things that come before you, we're also adding customers at a better clip than we have. And as some of those things that are already in the works happen, and we bring more customers on, the amount of water they use at some point is going to exceed the amount you're flushing, and that flushing can pull back. So not only are you going to make some money, you're going to get rid of this cost of flushing.
Well, that was going to be my-
You're always going to want to flush. Don't get me wrong. You're going to always want to flush, but it won't be at this rate.
Well, that was going to be my next question about, do you have an idea of when in the future we're going to be using enough to make a significant impact on this flushing, purging?
We can probably take a little bit of a guess at the amount this is daily, like the gallons per day.
Yeah.
And I would say, without talking names, you know, there's a development not far from where we're flushing.
Yeah.
That's going to immediately upon build-out have another 100 or so.
Yeah.
That number translates to probably-
Several days flush.
Half of that, I mean, maybe.
Yeah.
And I think they have plans to do another 200 or 300, and there's some others involved in the past. But as long as those kind of things keep going and new businesses, we're definitely going in the right direction to slow that down. Help the water quality. I mean, that's, that's a really big deal. It gets us out of the notices, and the notices are worse, like Ronnie mentioned, in warm weather. So it's nice to feel the fall weather coming, but it also gives you a chance. And I don't know if you pay attention to the notices you see, you know, we're still having to do it, but you have to do it because you're looking at a 12-month window, all four quarters. So you might actually get compliance for a couple of quarters, but until the averages get for the full 12 months, you don't come out. And this usage increase is what's going to get you out of that.
The flushing, is it causing any pressure issues?
They're doing it at a pretty low rate.
Yeah, it's not.
No pressure issue right now, and really, we've got pretty decent pressure in most places unless you've got somebody that's on high spot, you know? But I think, unless, I'm trying to remember some interim places along 220, if you get out towards the end of 158 is the lowest there, and I think that's still in the 40s.
I'll, I'll talk to you after this, then. They were having some pressure issues at times.
You're there? And I'll say, remember-
I'll talk to you after that.
Not in getting an operational, but the tank height can be improved and help us on that too.
And we've always, when they've reported those to us, we've filled the tank if that needs a capacity to give them as much pressure as we could at that location. They, they have my direct contact information, so they let me know if they're having pressure issues, and we adjust accordingly.
I can get to technically the details, but that tank height is for water edge water quality. They try to keep it down for that, but if the pressure problem's gone, you get bumped it back up to make sure you find that happy medium.
Other question. Well, since you're here, we're going to be starting a tank in the not-too-distant future. Is that going to- Is that going to have an impact pro or con on the purging operation?
It's not going to help if we fill it. I would probably suggest we look at the growth we're having, and then make a decision on one of those tanks in the interim, pulling, pulling them down and letting the higher one-
Fill it up at the right time, is what you're saying?
That's right. We can make do in the interim to keep it from being worse. So-
Okay.
Thinking about that, way ahead of that fault, so we need to make sure we do that balanced, and, you know, we got, we're, we're addressing growth that's happening, you know, doing it for a reason of growth, but we do need to make sure of that. So we've talked about a method to do that as well.
Anything else, gentlemen? That's it, I believe we need to have a motion if we wish to proceed with consideration of this grant request.
I make a motion to approve the grant request?
Motion to approve the grant request process.
Second.
And seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate with an aye. Those opposed by name. Thank you.
Thank you.
30 September, that's a pretty good turnaround. No new business. Commissioners, anything else? Commissioner comments, we'll start with Commissioner Travis.
I've got no comment tonight.
No comment, Commissioner Berger?
Well, a couple of things. One, want to thank a couple of folks for a job well done this weekend over in Readsville, Officer Kenneth Pascal, Seth Durham with Readsville Fire Department, Angie Ward, Richie Wright, a group effort from Rockham EMS, Readsville Police Department, Readsville Fire Department, they saved a man's life, performed CPR and brought him back. Gentleman was 84 years old. Due to their efforts and some of the folks just in the area, happened to be a respiratory therapist, and some other folks performed CPR and brought the man back. He was at J.C. Park watching a ballgame, so job well done. And also today, Rusty Gray, many of you know Rusty with, over in the Madison area, applied for a permit, and there will be a Back the Blue Rally, October the 4th at 2:00 in the municipal lot on Murphy Street. So it's 2:00 on October the 4th.
Thank you. Commissioner Pirtle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I'd like to thank Ms. Craddock and the folks from RCC, Ms. Lester and Dr. Scott from the school system for being here, and, and everything they do for the Rocket Top program. Obviously, as our community college and our school systems collaborate, the winner's going to be Rockingham County, and this is a perfect example of that. You know, we hear a lot about workforce development, and I know RCC is, that's their primary focus right now, but let's not forget those kids coming out of school, not every one of them's meant to go to college, and this is an excellent pathway to a much-needed career here in our county. And the last thing I want to say is, the kiddos with the, here, we had some more school buses on the road. So when you're out and about in the mornings, I know the, historically, when I was in law enforcement, we always did a little infomercial or a little segment about making sure you pay attention to the school buses on the roadway and at the bus stops, so that we don't have no, no accidents, we don't want nobody to get hurt. So mind those, mind those stop signs on those buses. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
You want to mention the Highway Patrol?
I will later.
Okay. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to thank all those who attended tonight, we appreciate it. Always have appreciated those who take interest in their county government, but especially with the shutdown earlier this year when we didn't have anybody in the audience or in the gallery, it was just an eerie feeling. So thank you, guys, for being here, we appreciate it.
Well, thanks, everyone that did make it here. We noticed our chair of the Rockingham County Republican Party is here, thank you for being here, and we appreciate all you folks that put up with the extra duties as far as dealing with the COVID thing and getting here. I want to remind the public in general, there's been a major slowdown in mowing grass in this county because of lack of money for DOT.
Mismanagement.
Yeah.
They had plenty of money.
Yeah.
Plenty of money. Exactly.
Yeah. That you can talk about, but you, you can't argue that the grass is tall, and I think it may be hiding litter. So I would encourage everybody to keep up with their efforts about controlling litter in Rockingham County, and on this last day of summer and as we enter the fall period and enjoy the cooler weather, we enjoy the recreational opportunities and help to keep it clean. Right, if there's no further business from any of the commissioners or the county manager, we will be going into closed session. We do not anticipate announcements or further actions after the closed session, and I would entertain at this time a motion to enter.
We will be going to recess Tuesday afternoon?
Okay, you might share that with us. Well, yeah, let me do this early there.
Nobody going to be here.
Well, I wanted to get something out, too, so thanks for the reminder, guys. Following our closed session, we will be recessing the regular session of the Board of Commissioners meeting, and we will be recessing until the 30th of September, where we will meet at Eden City Hall at 10:15. If you are not going to be attending that meeting, there, there will be a live stream coming from that, and that can be viewed on the link that's printed on your agenda sheet here, and we'll have that on our website if anybody needs it. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, yes, it's invitation-only, so those invitations have gone out due to the, the capacity of folks we could have, and with the chamber, the North Carolina Chamber, that the, Lee wanted me to remind you all that it's limited to those that were invited.
Okay.
Okay.
So, open, if you have an invitation.
No, no, I'm sorry. The, the meeting's open to the public, you're right.
Okay.
Sorry.
What did you say?
Never mind. Just erase that hole, erase that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Berger.
There will be at least five of us at Eden City Hall on the 30th at 10:15.
As you come when you want to.
All right. That said, we'll re-announce this shortly when we re-convene after our closed session. Do we have a motion to enter closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we enter closed session in court, so North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1, approve the closed session minutes, and North Carolina General Statute 143-318.183, to consult with attorney.
Motion made?
Second.
Seconded, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by name, we will be meeting here.